This is the April thirtieth meeting of the Newcastle Zoning Board of Appeals. Before we have our regular agenda tonight, we have two resolutions carried forward from our last meeting, which we will act on first and then move into our regular agenda. First resolution we had is the Letterman Revocable Trust, and we'll read the required excerpts from it. All right, you want to do that?
Thank you. Resolution dated Wednesday, April thirtieth, 2025, whereas Lawrence Letterman Revocable Trust, the applicant, owner of the premises known as seven eighty-three King Street, Chappaqua, New York, which is located in the R two eight district, submitted an application and supporting materials to the zoning board of appeals, the town of Newcastle zoning board in June of 2023 for a fifteen thousand nineteen point oh five square foot development coverage variance related to the construction of a subterranean addition to an existing bathroom to make it handicap accessible. Now therefore be it...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, and we just want to reflect that the resolution that we're reading into the record is we have a written resolution as modified dated Wednesday, April thirtieth, and this resolution is subject to the terms and conditions of the written resolution as set forth more fully in the modified resolution.
I'll do that afterward, but do it. Just I asked, I was writing it, I was like, I started by our counsel.
Now therefore be it resolved that the application to the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle by Lawrence Letterman Revocable Trust for fifteen thousand sixty-two square foot plus or minus development coverage variance related to the construction of a subterranean addition to an existing bathroom on the property commonly known as seven eighty-three King Street, Chappaqua, New York. Said property being designated on the tax maps of Newcastle as section one oh eight point five, block one, lot four, is hereby granted, subject to the satisfaction of the following conditions. One applicant shall report any easements deemed necessary by and acceptable to the town, its council, to effectuate the provisions and intent of the stormwater management plans as well as any deeds and conveyance documents deemed necessary or desirable by the applicant in consultation with the town and its council for and related to such easements. Two applicants shall have twelve months to start construction and twenty-four months to complete it. And general conditions, one, the approval of any variance is granted by the zoning board in accordance with and subject to those facts shown on the plans submitted and if applicable, as amended at or prior to this hearing, as herein above recited or said forth. Two, any approval of a variance by the zoning board is limited to the specific variance requested, but only to the extent that such approval is granted herein and subject to those conditions, if any, upon which such approval is conditioned, which are here and set forth. Three, the board gives no approval of any building plans, including without limitation the accuracy and structural integrity thereof of the applicant, but the same have been submitted to the board solely for informational and verification purposes relative to any variances being requested. Four, a building permit as well as any other necessary permits must be obtained within a reasonable period of time following the filing of this decision and prior to undertaking of any construction contemplated in this decision. To the extent any variance granted herein is subject to any conditions, the building department shall not be obligated to issue any necessary permits where such condition imposed should, in sole judgment of the building department, be first complied with, as contemplated hereunder. Occupancy will not be made until and unless a certificate of occupancy has been issued by the building department of the town of Newcastle, which legally permits such occupancy.
Do you want to make a motion to reapprove the resolution as amended and presented tonight?
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzey.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darison.
Aye.
Next, we have a motion carried from last meeting. We had a temporary motion, this is by, we crafted motion by our attorneys for the Meredith application, and we'll read part of that into the record.
Resolution dated Wednesday, April thirtieth, 2025, whereas Christopher Meredith and Laurel Meredith applicants of fourteen Wolf's Hill Road, Chappaqua, New York, submitted an application to the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle for an eighteen-foot side variance, a two thousand eight hundred twelve point five nine square foot building coverage variance, and a two hundred and ninety-six square foot FAR for the renovation of an existing non-conforming barn to convert it to, convert it to an office slash pool house. And now there be, therefore be it resolved that the applicant, the application made by Christopher Meredith and Laurel Meredith of fourteen Wolf's Hill Road, Chappaqua, to the zoning board for an eighteen-foot side yard variance, two thousand eight hundred twelve point five nine square foot coverage, development coverage variance, and a two hundred ninety-six square foot FAR variance for the renovation of an existing non-conforming barn to convert it to an office pool house on the property commonly known as fourteen Wolf's Hill Road, Chappaqua, New York. Said property, having been designated on the tax maps of Newcastle as section ninety-two point seven, block two, lot thirty-seven, and section ninety-two point seven, block two, lot thirty-eight, is hereby granted, subject to the satisfaction of the following conditions. Applicants shall file and complete a re-subdivision with the town of Newcastle Planning Board to merge section ninety-two point seven, block two, lot thirty-seven, and section ninety-two point seven, block two, lot thirty-eight, and shall comply with all requirements set out by the planning board with respect thereto, including the filing of a revised subdivision plan or other final recorded documents, as may be deemed necessary by the planning board and any other agency with jurisdiction. The applicant shall have six months to start construction and twelve months to complete. The applicant must file an as-built survey upon completion of new pool house, new office slash pool house. General conditions, one, the approval of any variance is granted by the zoning board in accordance with, subject to those facts shown on the plans submitted, if applicable, and amended at, prior to this hearing, herein above recited or said forth. Two, any approval of variance by the zoning board is limited to the specific variance requested, but only to the extent that such approval is granted herein and subject to those conditions, if any, upon which approval was conditioned, which herein set forth. Three, the board gives no approval of any building plans, including without limitation the accuracy, the structural integrity thereof or thereof of the applicant, but same have been submitted to the board solely for informational and verification purposes relative to any variances being requested. Four, a building permit as well as any other necessary permits must be obtained within a reasonable period of time following the filing of this decision and therefore undertaking of any construction contemplated in this decision. To the extent any variance granted herein is subject to any conditions, the building department shall not be obligated to issue any necessary permits where any such condition imposed should, in the sole judgment of the building department, be first complied with, contemplated hereunder. Occupancy shall not be made until and unless a certificate of occupancy is issued by the building department of the town of Newcastle, which legally permits such occupancy.
Just before we proceed, just one simple correction to the whereas clause, as was read into the record, it mentioned a two thousand eight hundred twelve point five nine square foot, it's a development coverage variance, not a building coverage variance. So just wanted to, you know, make sure the record reflected that.
So noted, thank you. Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just one other thing, I just want to reiterate what I said the last time, which is the resolution as read into the record is a partial, is a partial resolution, and is subject to the full written resolution, as will also be part of the record, and is subject to all the terms and conditions of the full written resolution dated April thirtieth, 2025.
Once again noted, thank you. I will make a motion that we approve the motion as presented by our colleague and as amended by our legal counsel. And I'm...
Okay, I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzey.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darison.
Aye.
Okay, now we can get into our regular meeting agenda. Public hearings on Reynolds.
Reynolds.
Oops. Thank you, Mike.
Evening.
Hi, could you tell us for the record your name and what is it that you're seeking?
Yes, my name is Emily Reynolds, and I'm seeking a thirty-foot variance for a parking spot in the front of my home.
Okay.
My presentation is verbal, but anyone's welcome to look at the survey and the application.
And could you tell us how long that parking spot has been there, Ron's going?
Parking spot has been there for more than two years.
More than two years, okay. And the reasons that you want us to know that you need this area, this variance?
Yes, and if you don't mind, I'll just read my statement.
Please do.
Good evening, my name is Emily Reynolds, this is my first town meeting, so thank you for having me. I'm a married, working mother of two, and I moved to Chappaqua two and a half years ago. My husband and I own sixteen Roaring Brook Road, which is between Horace Greeley High School and the traffic light at Bedford Road. Shortly after we moved in, we hired a landscaping company to add a gravel parking spot off to the side of our driveway. I had no idea that this spot was too close to the street to comply with town code, but I'm grateful for the opportunity, genuinely, given to me here tonight to legalize this parking spot. A second spot that we added does, as I understand it, comply with town code because it's so close to our house. Five people live in our home, and we have a one-car garage. This parking spot is essential for the safety of our two toddlers. This parking spot eliminates any need to constantly move cars back and forth and allows drivers to turn around in the driveway so that they can merge onto Roaring Brook Road without incident. This space means less movement, which means less danger for our two girls. This spot has been in place for more than two years without incident. A turnaround spot even closer to the street has been in place for more than a decade, so it predates our ownership of the home, and that spot has also been there without incident. Any aesthetic complaints have been mitigated by a custom seat or privacy fence that shields any parked cars, cars, from every one of our neighbors. We are respectfully requesting a thirty-foot variance from the town code in order to legalize the gravel parking spot we added in March of 2023.
Okay, so, another question. I'm looking at your site plan, and I think I know what to answer you, but for the record, I'm going to have you state it. Is there any other place on the property that you could access to use other than the parking area? Is there any way to get to the side or back of the house that would give you areas to park your car without having to request a variance?
I don't know, but we could perhaps park next to the garage.
I was really asking you a leading question, because I could see your garage, is your AC and your walkway, and I don't see how you control your car there, but I just for the record, wanted to get in there, that you do have a very small piece of property and, and, so we'll take that under consideration.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to address this application?
No hands are raised.
We have one hand raised in the back, please go forward. Can you state your name, please, for the record?
My name is Robert Lewis, I live at two Roaring Brook Road, just to the east of the applicant. So the turnaround space was put in place at the suggestion of Paul Chioli about fifteen years ago. It was, it was done at the, when the, let's see, they were the Fosters who lived there at that time. There have been, since we've lived in our property for about twenty-eight years, there have been five people living at sixteen Roaring Brook Road. And most of the people who have lived there have had one or two cars. The Reynolds, I guess, they have more cars, for some reason they have at this time as many as five cars parked in their driveway. Right now, I guess they have more like three or four cars.
I have to dispute that.
Sorry?
I have to dispute that.
Okay, well, get your turn.
So, we, they put up a fence recently, it's quite lovely, and I'm very happy that they did that because the cars that they now have parked immediately on, next to the property line are, to our, in our opinion, somewhat unsightly, and we are, we would just as soon not see all those cars. Most of the time, let's say there are something like two or three cars right there, and those cars are in the, what you would call the front yard. The space that the Fosters put in as a turnaround, they wanted to put in as a parking space, and Mr. Chioli made clear that he would, he suggested to them that it would not fly as a parking space. The required nine-by-eighteen dimensions of a parking space were too much, they didn't work with that driveway, but he would certainly accept a turnaround space of slightly smaller dimensions for safety reasons. We, I think, would reluctantly accept the additional spaces. I say reluctantly because we still don't love the idea of having all those cars in the front yard, and the, we would ask that the zoning board of appeals would put some conditions that would allow for some, that would ensure that maintenance of the fence be, be kept up in the future, given that the property turns over so frequently. How can we be assured that the next owner of the property isn't going to let the fence deteriorate? Fences that we've seen need to be replaced as often as every three to five years. Now, there was, the people who occupied the property, not prior, I guess it was property, prior to the Reynolds. not prior, I guess it was proper, prior to the, uh, Reynolds, they just let the fence go, and the fence fell over. There was a fence there before they came, and it was fell over into our property, and we just pushed it back over and fell into the, uh, yard. It was a post and rail fence, and, um, you know, people do that. But, um, we would like to think that there would be, uh, some teeth in the provision in, in the appeal that would allow the town to require, the owner of the property to maintain the fence after the Fosters, I mean, after the Reynolds leave. So, is, is there any, uh, is there any way that that kind of verbiage could be?
Absolutely, we can, we, we could require a fence to be maintained, um, in perpetuity. When you get a variance that is in perpetuity, we can add a, uh, a clause to our, uh, resolution if we so approve.
I will tell you that the, the fence that, that the Reynolds have installed is quite lovely, and we were quite surprised, but they did a beautiful job with it.
Right, well, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that was gonna be one of my questions about what type of fence it was, and everything. But if we determine that we, fence is required, we have every, every ra- every way and way to do that without problem. And other than the fence, that's gonna be your, uh, your main concern. Okay, thank you for your information. Ms. Reynolds?
Just a follow up that we hope not to be leaving anytime soon.
We hope to stay in town.
Though I hear there's property turnover. Um, we are happy to maintain the fence, and so that, uh, zoning board of appeals members can picture what's happening. Um, we own three cars, one is always in the garage or off the property because it's being driven around. One is usually at the train parking lot because one of us is at work. And so during daylight hours, there's typically one car in the driveway.
One question on the fence.
Yes.
Um, can, the firm or building department first, is the, the fence that was installed, did it require a permit?
No, sir.
Did not require a permit?
That is correct.
So it's in there and without, all legalized and everything?
It's a legal installation, yes.
Good, good. Um, so since you don't have any record in town of the fence you put in and the type you put in, I'm gonna ask that you submit to, to us, um, a description of the fence and the particulars of it so that we could, um, know what we would wanna do with it in the future. Um, we could, uh, we could go forward with this and leave a caveat in the motion. The fence has to be described to the building department in whatever manner they desire. And that would be subject to, to our approval, okay? Uh, I'm gonna end that, does the board have any questions or any comments?
I just have one question, the, on the plan, and forgive my ignorance if I, I'm asking something obvious. Uh, the, I see three gravel parking areas?
Yes.
And whi- which one is the, is it alls?
The middle spot does not comply with town code.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll move, we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenze.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazin.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the, uh, application, uh, for the sixteen Roaring Brook Road, uh, property, to legalize an existing gravel parking area, requiring a front yard, front yard set tag variance of, um, thirty feet. For the following reasons. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. The benefits sought by, or achieved by, cannot be achieved by any other method. In this instance, the require, the, uh, requested variance is somewhat substantial, but not excessive itself. Uh, there'll be no adverse effect on the physical environment or conditions in the neighborhood. This is a self-created hardship in that the applicant, uh, knew or should have known that this was going to require a variance. Although it's a self-created, created hardship, uh, the benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any detriment to the, uh, town or to the neighborhood. I mean, there's survey on that fence, Tom? Says, that's where it was.
We have a survey already, sir.
On, on gravel, but we're not, what about the fence?
Yes. The fence does not need a survey.
Even though, even if we put it in our, in our approval rating or any? If we're gonna have this thing maintained forever, should be the location, I, my, my belief that the location should be specified for future reference.
I, in that respect, Mr. Chairman, I would request that we specify the fence on the east side of the property be recognized, not the whole property.
Correct, correct, yeah, that's, that's where the area, that's where the parking, okay.
And y- yes, we can have a survey, please.
Okay, okay, um. The approval of the application shall be subject to, um, the applicant providing with our, our building department with a required survey of the east side of the fencing and a, uh, a description of the type of material used in the fencing and its construction. And this, the, uh, also shall be subject to, to the approval of this application. Uh, it shall be part of the approval rating, part of the approval, that the fence shall be maintained, uh, in its present state in perpetuity.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could sug- suggest that any, in the event that a replacement fence is, is needed, it would be a solid fence of at least six feet.
Which it is now.
Right, but I'm just saying, uh, in, in the event that this current fence was, was, uh, needed, for whatever reason was damaged or needed to be revised.
No, no, you're, that's why you're our lawyer.
Think of worst case scenario.
Okay, and, and such fence shall be equal to what's there, uh, and it shall be a solid fence, six feet in height. And for those reasons, we should approve.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenze.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb. Kathleen Darazin.
Aye.
Thank you very much, come on.
Uh, Heinz Bridge Realty LLC. Reviewer, my name is Zoryan Meshrat, I'm representing, and is realty for the requested, uh, front yard variance for the proposed addition and renovation of the existing house. Um, this house is, um, not, pre-existing non-conforming home with, uh, setbacks and the size of the property. Uh, what we are proposing is to add, uh, add a fourth bedroom onto the house above the garage without increasing the, uh, uh, putting friends to the house in that area. We are camp liver in the front, so the reason is, we need a little bit of the space on the inside, and we also need it for aesthetics, I have a copy of the evaluation we've submitted, to see what it looks like. At this stage, the, like I said, this addition is gonna went over the existing garage, and we have no other place to ro- locate it without digging foundation, and even if we locate it anywhere else, it still will need a variance. So there's no other place located without new variance. The existing property as, as it is, is pretty just and non-conforming, and there is no other land available for us to purchase and make this variance go away. Uh, the addition will make the house compatible with the homes, it's actually smaller than the other homes around, and this will bring it up to par with the houses in the neighborhood, will not create any, uh, negative effect on the neighborhood, as a fact, anything that will create a positive effect, was the house, it's, it's renovation, with the siding, with the windows, with the roof, et cetera, and it'll look more modern, more today versus nineteen sixties manhood.
So what you're saying is you're going to, you're going to, Ted, just go up your garage.
Yes.
If you, if you were to go anywhere else, it still just increased the non-conformity, so.
Correct, the garage is existing there, we're going right above it, right now it's only like a regular small, the rooftop, right?
Yeah, and, I know it's one of the smaller homes in the neighborhood too, I know that neighborhood. So, um, I don't see any problem with this application at all. Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to address this application?
We have one hand.
You have one hand, couldn't, I think, there's nobody in our audience, so could you put that one on, please?
Uh, hello, um, pleased to meet you, um, the, thank you very much for inviting us, uh, to join this call. Um, we just had a query, we're, uh, next door neighbors and, um, Mister, um, Ernie Fatagiri, he's, um, you know, he's generally a gentleman, he, he might would to ask us if, uh, we would, if he would be, you know, we'd be okay with him, um, taking down some of the trees, et cetera. Um, and we obviously want, um, to cooperate with him as much as possible. Um, now, just, uh, in the process of, uh, you know, Mister Ernie, um, carrying out the works, one thing that we noticed was that, um, maybe our privacy might be a little lower than before, uh, because the trees, we used to separate, um, the two houses on the other over there, so, um, and then we also have this, uh, like jacuzzi kind of thing, um, which was here. And so, and because, uh, Mister Ernie's house is on an elevated field compared to ours, um, they, they can look down, so, um, we think that maybe our privacy will be a bit lower. So really, without trying to, um, you know, put a scanner in the works or anything like that, I just wanted to understand, um, what, especially my rights would be if we felt that we're a little uncomfortable, like, you know, for example, if we wanted to restore that level of privacy which existed, then do we use our only course of action to plant some trees on our end, basically? To, so that it serves as a, like a screen or line. I actually didn't really know what, um, options were available. So, yeah, hopefully, like, it's a point for us. So we don't want to be uncooperative, we actually want, uh, Mister Ernie to, uh, you know, move forward and have everything that he would like, but, you know, just from our perspective, we just wanted to understand, um, what our options were.
Okay, can, can you interest the, uh, the Reynolds trees?
Uh, I guess, the, the, the trees, they are, just a couple of them on the east side of the property, which I'm assuming the gentleman's house is here because there is a road on the other side, so. Um, those trees are basically dead, I mean, they really, you know, dangerous. There will be some landscaping done to the property and few trees will be added. The addition is in the opposite side of the house. On this side, there's hardly any windows, so the, the, the privacy of the neighbor is protected really from the, how the house exists. The addition, like I said, is on the other side of the property, and that's, that's, uh, uh, the variance in question is on the addition itself. The, the trees, like I said, they basically dead, I mean, you know, they, you see them like, whoa, and they're too close to the house, they have to go. Additional trees will be planted in between the neighbors, which is, you know, I don't see the, Ernie, the, the owner have any problem with that.
Okay, um, Chairman, I look, you look very expectant, do you have something to say on that?
I'm good, you're.
Uh, so you're planning to plant, what, uh, what kind of trees are they, deciduous or evergreen?
They, they're deciduous.
Deciduous.
The existing ones, yeah, and dead deciduous.
What are you ready to put back?
Most likely, we don't know yet, we haven't really decided on the landscape, and the house was also, and it's gonna be really done very nicely.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, landscaped, et cetera. The, we, there's no decision have been made on that, but there will be some landscaping done, and, uh, Ernie has already approached the neighbors, talked to them, be friendly, uh, neighborly, and he will work something out between the two neighbors, and I'm sure the neighbor will be satisfied.
I'm, I'm confident on that too. I'm not gonna, I, I, as far as I'm concerned, we're not gonna require any kind of sp- specific plantings or anything because that, that gets into a whole other.
Yeah, it will be voluntarily planted. He wants his own house to be also, uh, you know, protected and have his own privacy. You know, this is not, you know, a commercial business where you need to expose your computers at home and
Okay.
to work, to be, to benefit both of us.
Can you comment on that, Mr. Park?
Yes, so, if I could just confirm what I understood, um, you know, we expect to have a, you know, nice conversation, and we'll just essentially work something out that works for the both of us, so there is a good solution in terms of privacy, both for Mister Ernie and for our side as well. And essentially, that will involve, um, planting some trees, I guess, um, into the spots where the, the dense trees originally stood. But is that the, is that the, the intention?
It will be within the vicinity, not exactly where they were, because one of the reasons those trees are going, because they are too close to the house. One of them is maybe like eight feet away from the house, and it's not in good shape, and any windstorm would bring it down. We will be planting a buffer of trees alongside the, the east property line, but not in the same location.
Okay, so not in the same location, um, and I guess, in terms of what you, what Mister Ernie is entitled to do, um, is he entitled to basically not plant any trees if he chose not to?
That's, that's correct, it's, it's his property, you can, when it comes to plantings, there's no town requirements as it's plantings.
Okay.
I'm sure that the neighbors are going to get along.
Yeah, okay, okay, so I get it, so whatever he does, chooses to do on his property is up to him. Um, it's not about business, basically.
No, the same goes the other way around, and choose on your property, you're ready to do it, it's don't, it's nobody else's business. So I think the two of you should get together and work it out, and I'm sure you're gonna come to your, uh.
Yeah.
Exactly, Mister, that, that we are.
Yeah. But that's great, thank you for the clarity, um, we just want to make sure that we, um, understood what was, uh, within our rights and what wasn't. No, that's great, thank you for the clarity, we just want to make sure that we, um, understood what was, uh, within our rights and what wasn't. Okay, but thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. Do we have any comments from the board on this application?
I just have a question, so, um, you're adding a bedroom, so I assume you're adding the septic fields to the?
Yes, we are in the process with the US Steel County Department to add additional fields, uh, to accommodate the fourth bedroom.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, everybody's good.
I'll move and close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenze.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazin.
Aye.
I'll take it, I'll take this, yes, sir.
You have to listen there.
Um, so, um, I would like to make a motion, um, that we, um, consider the application of Heinz Bridge Realty LLC, uh, in Valhalla, uh, for a fourteen foot, uh, front yard variance, uh, for the following reasons. Um, they are adding.
Twenty feet, it was a mis- it was a mistake to change.
Oh, oh, sorry, twenty feet?
Twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four.
Scattered, what was, right?
Didn't do the math. Um, okay, I retract that, a twenty-four foot, uh, front yard variance, uh, for the following reasons, they're adding a fourth bedroom over the garage. Um, any other location according to the applicant on the property would require a variance. Uh, therefore, this is probably the least intrusive, uh, way to add a fourth bedroom. Uh, they are, um, making a concerted effort to, uh, ensure that the home is aesthetically pleasing and, uh, meeting the, the look of the, uh, local environment. Um, the, um, the granting of the variance, uh, will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or in detriment to nearby properties. Uh, again, referencing the aesthetic changes that they're enhancing the house with. Um, the benefit sought by the applicants, uh, cannot be achieved by any other feasible method, again, referencing, uh, any other location on the property would require a variance. Uh, the requested, uh, variance is substantial, um, but again, this is probably the, the best, uh, Um but again, this is probably the the best recourse to add a fourth bedroom. Uh it will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Um there are there has been neighbor who has expressed his concerns about um uh trees and uh landscaping to ensure that um their view shed is preserved. And the applicant has uh indicated that he'd be happy to work with the neighbors uh to their satisfaction. Uh it is a self-created hardship um in the respect that obviously uh when the property was purchased, they knew uh that it was pre-existing non-conforming, uh and anything that they were going to do would require variance. Um therefore, I make a motion that we grant the variance um with Tom, what what do we need for this?
We will need a a final survey from the Before we go any further, there there is a discrepancy that we need to point out.
Okay.
On the surveys submitted by Stephen F. Hall, they show a proposed deck in the rear of the house. That deck would require a side yard variance. I just want to be clear that that's not part of the approval query, because it is shown on the plan set. They did not ask for that.
Uh so your your proposed permit application
is for a second floor addition.
is just for the second floor, no deck, okay.
Yes.
Do we need to add that into the resolution?
It's.
Um yeah. May I, Mister Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh that's the case, I would request a holdover. Maybe we can modify our application to include the deck with it. And somehow there was an oversight, I don't know why, and the denial letter was only for the second floor addition. And we do have a little bit of time. We if it's possible to hold it over till the next meeting and we will do the changes if we need to re-notify the neighbors, we will do so to make sure that we cover also the deck. And I can discuss the deck with you briefly right now. This way we can save time at the next meeting.
But we have a pretty good agenda tonight, but I'm um I'm assuming that your permanent app- permit application for the second floor did not include the deck?
No, it didn't include the deck, did it?
It does not, sir.
It didn't? Okay, I apologize. I don't know how that happened, but uh if it's possible that we can hold it over, we can we can modify and we'll come back and take care of that one.
Okay. Oh, okay, okay, okay. Okay, so I'm gonna I'm gonna jump in here.
Yeah.
Slip on your toes a little bit.
Please do.
We're gonna We're gonna hold off on this application, we're gonna stop and give it a resolution. Uh because a discrepancy has been found in the application and in the building code application. And it was somehow the proposed deck was neglected to be included. The applicant has you know agreed to refile with the deck application uh as necessary paperwork wise and is has also agreed to you know pre-notify the neighbors as required by the by our code.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and we'll be back at our next meeting, uh which is
Likewise.
maybe twenty eight.
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much, and we'll see you then.
Okay. See you one day.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what's your thinking?
Uh hello, my name is Calga Mas, I'm in North Impact, I represent the client, uh St. Anna Volchitsky. Um so we are uh the property consists of adding uh a new garage to uh a house which doesn't have a garage. It's still the house on the uh on the street that doesn't have a garage. And the client uh wishes to have a two-car garage. Uh so um we would like to uh ask the board for a few variances. Actually, uh I should restart off that one of the variances that was requested, we are not going to request, which is the development. Uh we reconfigured the driveway so that uh basically we we are not uh you know we are complying with the coverage of the of of the without. So that's that is uh something we're not going to be uh asking for. However, we are asking for a s- uh side setback, um uh side setback for the garage.
Can you, excuse me, can you carry the mic with you so that?
Yeah.
No, you can just pull it out.
Yeah.
Put it while you're describing it from the.
Oh, yeah. No, because this way I can show it.
Okay, we we just wanna we wanna be sure that the people on TV
Uh. Yes, of course.
can can hear what we hear.
Okay. Uh so that that is uh one. And uh there is also an existing uh old uh shed that the client has put in like twenty years ago. And uh it was like on a forklift, no foundation, and it's uh very close to the um property line. So that also needs a side yard. And that also contributes to the building coverage because uh it is and it's and it and it counts uh for the calculation of the building coverage. So so that's it. I have um this is the plan of the uh this is the plan of the is of the garage, so you can see uh why because the dimensions it is, which is two-car garage. And um yeah, these are the the drawings, you can almost see how it's going to look like. But mostly, uh you are concerned with the variances of the setback and uh the building coverage.
Okay, so the existing house does not have a garage?
No, it doesn't.
It's just a. It's a sort of thing, okay.
And again, it's the only one on the street like this.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to address this application?
No hands are raised online.
Okay, we have we have some in the audience here. Please, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Kathy Celeste. I live directly across the street from the house. And my biggest concern is that the the driveway uh will will cut will be directly aligned with my driveway across the street. On a very narrow street, that's a big concern. They have multiple cars coming and going. And I I think it's it seems to me that that shouldn't be acceptable. Like in a in a narrow street like that, when you got two driveways that are directly across from one another. I mean, I've I've driven around looking and I don't see that.
Okay, yes, I'm just I'm sorry, there was a two driveway now like that without the.
No, their their driveway is on the other side of where they're anticipating.
No.
And it's not, by the way, it's not the only house in the neighborhood that doesn't have a garage.
On the street, yes.
No, I'm in the street. It isn't.
But oh, there isn't.
We don't have a garage.
No, they don't have.
We don't have a carport.
Oh.
So and it's that's that's my biggest concern and I'm willing
I actually, maybe I should address this concern because I maybe you should just look at this because um we have uh revised the configuration since the what was proposed, and that's why we cannot ask for a coverage. And it means that now your driveway, and this is not, you know, this is pulled from the uh G S G I G I S map. But basically, the driveway that we are proposing is going to be very uh maybe you know few feet uh actually across from your driveway, because we're pulling. It's not going to be like it was proposed straightforward, which the coverage would have been also a problem, but um it was like a very wide driveway. We are narrowing it down on this way, your driveway, which is this one. Because I knew that this may come up, so I prepared this diagram.
Okay.
So that you that can be addressed.
Okay, I I still think it's really tight, but thank you.
Good evening, um my name is Greg Gonzalez. I am the owner of thirty-eight Saint John's Place, so that's the property adjacent to where uh the proposed garage would go. Um my two main concerns, the obviously the setback concern for a two-car garage. Or so we are the only other house that does not have a garage on the street. We have a carport. Um and then also, just the square footage of it seems enormous to have a two-car garage in this spot for the size of the property. And I I I would actually appreciate if I could get an actual uh uh calculation of what the actual square footage is of the house right now. Um I can't seem to to find anything, so that the question would then be how much how much more would they be going over the square footage that they've already uh built upon on the on the lot? Um so those are my two main concerns.
Well, if you ask one of your questions, the building coverage
Yeah.
is twenty-six two thousand six hundred sixty-three feet. Two thousand six hundred sixty-three feet is the the front of building coverage. And I don't know how much of that is garage, uh but I'm sure our architect can tell us.
S- so so that is twenty-six hundred is is including the house already, or?
Yes, yes, because they're adding they're adding to the existing residents.
Right, so the uh the existing residents, again, because I'm not sure about how, you know, what the what is actually filed on in town. But online, when this house was for sale, it was listed, I think, at just over twenty-nine hundred square feet.
This building coverage is not.
Building coverage is not.
Yeah.
Lot coverage.
Okay.
Wait.
Um can I just ask your your understanding?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you say that you're not coming from the building and development coverage variances tonight? If there were changes?
No, so we are asking for the building, uh not not the development. Just because we are reducing the driveway, so that is yeah, and uh actually for the building uh building coverage, the shed contributes as well, so.
The shed, the shed is included in your building co- coverage calculations.
Yes, 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 yes.
Uh which which is according to my sheet here, your building coverage is less than a hundred square feet over the allowable limit.
Because it needs to be. Exactly, exactly.
So to me, it's a mini- minimal amount.
Because the.
They could have built that as a right up to, very similar to the size it is, less a hundred feet, which is really a little ten by ten foot square, which is not gonna help you. So um I understand your concern, I I I realize where you're coming from. But the fact of the matter is that what's there and what's proposed to be there um is very similar. And and the the additional coverage is not going to severely uh be a detriment to to the property. That's my opinion from the numbers I've looked at.
Okay.
It may seem weak to you now because you're looking at these plants and these pictures and everything, but um I've known I know these properties very well. I've seen them happen in other parts of town. Uh once they're built, um they really don't do as bad as people think they do. Okay, I'm not gonna guarantee how you're gonna feel about it, but property-wise, it's not too much different than many of our requests here, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your input. Do we have any uh comments from the board on this one?
Can I just say something? I I just wanna ask the architect one other question. I I do wanna know a little bit more about the driveways that are are I I know you've done some work to mitigate that, I mean there are there any other ways to to mitigate the concern that uh certainly our resident class street is.
But before we before we get into that.
Okay.
Okay, and I know they have a legitimate concern in their mind. But as far as I know, and I our council is going to correct me if I'm wrong. I know of nothing in the building code or the zoning code that requires a placement of a driveway on any particular spot on the property, whether it be chased to another driveway, across from another driveway. Um it is driveways can be placed almost anywhere on the property that suits the construction of the property. Um but if if I'm wrong on that, or if there's any changes on that, I'd like our building department, our building uh inspector in our board council to advise us on that.
I was thinking the same thing, Mister Chairman.
There is no.
Right, it's just not, it's it it it's a practical objection, but it's not a a legal.
Okay, okay.
Mister Chairman, there there are constraints on distance from an intersection and light line of sight vis- visuals from a driveway. But this is a middle-of-the-road application here.
Yeah. And those those constraints I'm aware of, we dealt with them in past applications. But I've never had an application where the question was whether it faced another driveway or not, and I didn't wasn't sure, but So you've told us that it's it is not legally required for them to be any separation between uh being across from each other.
That is correct, sir.
So um your concerns are legitimate because they're your concerns. Uh legally and uh where we have to come from, there's nothing we can really do about that. Unless one of our one of my colleagues decides that he wants to add something to it. I mean, I have no no control over that. I'm just I'm giving you my opinion. Warren, please continue.
No, that I mean that was I mean honestly, that does get at me. If it's permissible to be that way under the tender um other than asking, uh you know, in the interest of, you know trying to find a solution that works for both sides, I mean, has nothing to do with legal right.
I appreciate that.
And there there's nothing to say that the two neighbors can't get together and discuss their concerns and not necessarily have to modify anything, but maybe they will or maybe they won't, but if you don't ask, you don't get.
I have a question. Um so there's two trees shown um
Yes.
Yeah. on the on that property line right now, I think that are existing, so those are going to
So normally they are going to remain.
remain. Like I know because the driveway is gonna be a little different.
This one, this one is going unfortunately.
Yes, okay, but the two on the lot line are.
Yeah, we're going to try to, you know, we
Maintain us.
You know, we don't want to take them down. The only, from what I know, you when it is that close to the root, but we are including the slab on grade on on this on this part, so
Mm-hmm.
hopefully that's usually the rule of thumb is when you have the crown of the root is pretty much similar to the the root. And when you disturb that, it may result that the tree may may die later on, but hopefully not if this is not going to be. So I I mean, I don't know, but this is not, on our plan, we are not trying, we try preserve those two trees. And you know possibly planting a additional uh s- screen from from the neighbors.
I think somebody wants to say something. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Kathy Gonzalez, and I also reside at the property next door. Um so unlike other um situations that we've heard here tonight, um we have a little bit of a different situation with how the neighbor has um approached us with this. We were approached after the plans had already been in motion and all of that, and basically I was told um about two weeks ago and um the neighbor across the street was just um told yesterday by the uh property owner that this is what she's planning to do. Um so there was no, you know, how do you feel about this? What do you feel about, you know, just anything, just no cur- there was no courtesy there. When she approached me, um my question is, what um exactly, how much of a setback variance are they asking for?
Okay. The garage is three feet, three feet.
Three, two, it's two feet.
It says, okay.
So.
For the garage, for the.
All right, it says on the notice.
The garage is three feet.
That's what we, so she had told me when she approached me two weeks ago that it was a foot and that she, actually yesterday, she even told us a foot and three inches was all she was asking for. And then she had told me last two weeks ago there was a foot and a half. We do know that it was actually three feet that they're asking for. Our properties are, our houses are very close to each other. To put on a big two-car garage, which the neighborhood has all one-car garages except for the house on the other side of her property, which is probably the biggest property on the street, oh the most probably contemporary house in our neighborhood. Um our neighborhood, our houses are old. Um she had originally had a two-car garage or a one-car garage, I don't know what it was, um before she had done her original um renovation years ago, and they took that out and put the driveway right up against this, so there was a garage in that house originally. Um. It just comes very close to us. She had also told us uh that she was taking down those two trees that are, they are dangerous trees, we've had um Westchester Tree Life tell me that those trees are way too big, that that they should really should, they should never gotten as big as they are. So the concern of having a driveway go uh over that root system is very concerning to us.
So we can think.
Um, and but so, you know, she had told us that that was definitely part of the plan, and now we're hearing tonight that that is not part of the plan. So we're just concerned that there is um, they're they're not being completely transparent, we're worried that things will happen that are not being, that they're not being a hundred percent forthright. And we just want to be sure that um everything is on the up and up and that another concern of ours is, is that there is a lot of car action that goes on at that property. They have numerous cars, the cars are always changing, the kinds of cars, everything, they're loud cars, they have um loud mufflers, they they are they're they're, and listen, that's their passion and all that, and that's great. But with respect to the neighborhood, through all the years, we've put up with a lot of noise pollution. All the neighbors know it, all the neighbors feel it, it's it's been a problem, it's gotten better as the boards have gotten older and have been much more respectful. But there's a, they have a lot of friends with, they're they're into cars. We're worried about a bigger driveway, a garage, more cars, more 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 action going on, and the houses, we are close. And I know that they say that the that the two drivers across is not an issue, but the street is narrow, it's not a typically wide street, it's narrow, and it's it's just with all the car action going on, it just seems like it's just an accident waiting to happen. So those are all my concerns, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so what about the trees?
I can I can I can represent.
That's that's what we're gonna do with the trees.
I'm I'm really I'm I'm the owner, I'm here.
Okay.
Um, if I may speak about the the two trees maybe first, those two trees actually I do wanna take down. So that's just one thing, and I did say that to Kathy a couple of weeks ago, and I I abide by that because those, I think those trees should come down, and I'd like to put up a nice um of the green giants in between the the properties, and they'll grow nice and they'll look beautiful, and will have the uh will have the coverage. In in terms of my calculations, I was off, uh, cause I did not know about the the walls and the calculations of the walls, so whether it's one point three, one point five, I think it's ultimately two feet is what Claudia said, um, so just uh considering, but definitely the trees, I I do wanna take them down myself.
There are some Actually, it's three feet.
It's yeah, it's it's really, uh, it should be two feet because it's seven point nine four, which where we are. So, um, this is Tom, look.
Seven point nine four is too close to call that.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's why, yeah.
Your your mason, if he goes off by an inch, then we're back in front of the board. So I understand your your statement, but we gave you a foot to do construction.
Yeah, so it's like a generous variance basically, but we not going to
We never go to the exact number.
Yeah.
So I understand that you may build to that, which you're stating, but we're giving you a variance if you're off by an inch or two, seven point nine is
So it's it's basically, we are asking for bigger variance that we are projecting to build, we are projecting to build on less
Is eight.
Like our plan, seven point, we are, according to the plan of the garage, the way we want to build it, is uh it's going to be eight foot from the property line, seven point nine four, exactly. But I understand that the variance is for three feet, yeah.
Right, well, and and we do that like like our building instructor explained to you, and it's sometimes it's virtually impossible to get to the inch uh on on these constructions.
And of course, and and I appreciate that, it's it's
Can you hear them once again, please? The microphone.
No, I appreciate it, that's that's
That's better, but just to
to clarify the those numbers, that's all I wanted to say.
And and so the the interest of the neighbors, the three feet variance that's on our request is maximum, it may be less
Right.
if your if your calculations on site uh come to that, it will never be more because you will be back to us and we'd have you take it down. So we don't, we don't wanna do that, which is so we 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 try to protect everybody in the instance.
No, 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 that's that's veterans.
As as to the trees again, um I would I would be inclined to require, if the variance is is approved by our board, I would be inclined to require those trees to be removed.
Okay.
And to have a screening buffer put up, the green giant evergreen sounds like a very good alternative because they grow up very fast, they grow very thick, and they create a visual screen that's uh it's planted properly, impenetrable. So in order to do that, we would need a planting plan, an approved planting plan. But that that could be taken care of by making it part of the motion that that it's going to be done, and if it isn't done, then you're never gonna get a building permit
That's right.
or a C O, rather than have you come back and drag this out for meeting after meeting, which is unfair to everybody. So that's that's my comment, uh, yes.
Mister Chairman, excuse me. A tree removal permit will be required with the removal of three trees, and the neighbors will need to be notified.
Absolutely.
And this may elevate to the environmental review board stepping in to figure out the replacements and how so they will be replaced.
Okay.
It may be advantageous for the applicant to go there first.
In that case, then we're not gonna, we're not gonna go too far here tonight. I'm trying to make it easy for for everybody, but if that's the case, we're gonna do what needs to be done. Okay, so that's part of it, thank you, that's gonna be part of my determination. The other thing I wanna bring forth is the existing shed.
Okay.
I noticed that your shed is almost back to back with your neighbor's shed.
Right.
Okay.
So they
Which, nobody's complained about the shed tonight, and I believe there's nobody's going to complain about it, but for the record because everybody has sheds out there, and everybody knows exactly
Yeah, you don't have a garage.
Everybody has, they have, they have a perfect idea of why these sheds are necessary, and it's unfortunate that the properties are so small, but that's the facts of life. Um, so I wanna just get get it out in front of our my colleagues, and I have no objection to the shed, nobody's ever objected to it. And it's it's there, it's a junction with a similar shed on the other side of the property line, and um whatever happens tonight with the garage approval, uh, requisitation or uh request, that that the shed is fine with everybody. Okay, uh, that's that. So what we're gonna do tonight then, is we're going to have to postpone this uh this hearing. And the applicant is going to get a tree removal permit for the three trees by going to the the proper procedure to get the approvals, may have to go in front of you know, the environmental review board, we don't know yet, but whatever the case is, our building department will be happy, will be happy to advise you on that. And what needs to be added after the tree uh removal permit is uh accepted and approved is a planting plan showing a a row of, we're suggesting green giant evergreens, I mean, if you have something other you would like to do, you'd be
Yeah. Yes, we're just No, 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 this is that's
You have a right to to say, I'd rather put plant X instead of Y, you know, and we'll take it into consideration. But we we wanna get a uh a planting plan showing that there will be a buffer between your neighbor, your property and the neighbor's property. And um I would suggest strongly that you show the neighbor the plan too, so that they don't come back to us and say, wow, I didn't realize this is what it was gonna be when you comes, when you come to us again.
Right, well, they
If you think you can get all this done by the next meeting, we'll be happy to do it again.
Mm-hmm.
If you can't get it done, I'm sorry to say, you'll be back to meeting after that.
Right.
But we will leave it open for the next meeting, uh
Right, I won't be able to attend the next meeting, so there is there no uh possibility to have it conditionally approved the the variance or with this uh planting uh plan because
We we do that on occasion.
Yeah.
In this particular instance, there's a lot that needs to be done, and a lot, a lot of potentially a lot of motions to go forward through with with the uh um of the environmental review board, et cetera, et cetera, it's not just a simple one shot thing. And even if we gave you a conditional approval, part of the conditions would be that you um you you wouldn't get the building from it immediately either, you you would not be able to get the building to it until we know that your process is going to be brought to fruition, it's just not gonna be stopped somewhere. So I I'm I'm hesitant to do that tonight, I'm sorry to say, but we're going to have to put you off at at least till next meeting, and I suggest you do all you can between now and then. If you don't have it a hundred percent in order, come back to us anyway and tell us how far you are. And if it's so far that we believe you're able, you're able to continue without interruption, um, we may be con- consider
I just, I just want one more thing, cause I, um, so in terms of the trees, I've had Dennis over, actually many times over the property, cause
Cause I, um
I've been thinking about how on earth to put this garage on that on the property, which is relatively small, so um, so a lot of the trees actually, I even preplanted, the two trees, which are the white pines, and talking to Dennis, like those are not a problem.
So a lot of the trees, actually, I even preplanted.
Like those, cause of whatever words, technical words he uses, so I know, like, those things are, you know, that's never the issue, it's, you know, I do have that beautiful red maple.
You know, that's never the issue, it's
Um, that unfortunately would have to go, but I know if I've had him over the property many a times, because even I was asking him
Unfortunately would have to go, but I know I had him over the property many a times, because even I was asking him
previously, like how can we save the maple, can we move the garage, driveways different places, and so
Previously, like how can we save the maple, can we move the garage? So I, yeah, I I understand also, I mean, I I, is there any way we can do like a a conditional?
Cause I'm perfectly happy putting in the the green giants, um, I have a similar, actually grow a green giants on the other side, which is
I have a similar, actually grow a green giants on the other side, which is absolutely dense and beautiful, and that's what I I intend to do, so
I don't know if that's in any way we can do a a conditional.
Uh, no, we're not gonna do a conditional tonight, but if you're confident that Dennis is is on board with the ideas of how you wanna handle these tree removals, then you should be able to get here next month and give us all the info, and we can go forward with it. I don't, I don't see a way tonight
Okay.
to do this properly, is what I'm saying, and and we don't wanna have this thing come back to us.
So so the only thing, we are going to come back next meeting, and I may do it abroad or or I'm going to ask the client, because I'll be in Europe, so it would be one thirty or two o'clock in the morning for me. So would be um to present a planting uh plan approved with uh with the town.
You're gonna, you're going to show us that you have an approval to remove the three trees?
Right, right.
That's that's critical, you need to get a permit for that.
Yes.
And then you're gonna show us a planting plan that shows the screening that's going to be installed
Right.
during or after construction to to screen the neighbors from the new construction. And if it's all looks good, you you'll you'll, we'll go forward.
The footprint and everything we leave in the way it is, this was, this not going to be, yes, the footprint of the garage?
Right, what you're what you're showing now, um, unless one of my colleagues has objection to it, I don't
Mister Chairman, I I just have a question. In in light of the neighbor's concerns about the bulk of the building, and was it, did this go in front of the A R B?
No, it's
No need?
Not yet, sir, no.
But the A R B does not really um talk about the bulk, other than the how it's look looks like.
They're, they will refer to the architectural features of the house.
Yeah.
Not the bulk.
Not, not the square foot.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So I just, yeah, so, cause I just want to know what what to
Again, um, get get as much as you can, get done.
To prepare for the next meeting, yeah.
Come back to us, and we will do what needs to be done from there on.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Okay, we'll see you next month.
Bye bye.
Okay. You ready for this?
Yes, sir.
You calling it?
I called it.
Mister Chairman, you're from Zoom, we're recording this in the home room, Kadosh, sorry. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, can you say your name again in the in your uh
Yeah, Jeremy Renato here from Rain Concepts, just representing the owner, Michael Kadosh, and um looking for a variance for uh coverage and for um several front yard setbacks that are related to a construction remodel. Um, would you like me to share my screen here with the the plan set that we have? Hopefully I can do that correctly. Okay. So the property is as located here, has uh two driveways. One entering off Auto Street being the main one that they use, and and another one that comes off of here off of King Street that uh from what I understand from the owner, sort of like a secondary entrance. They are proposing to put a pool, a subsequent patio, and some other sort of improvement material that leave from the house in this side yard area, and also a potential future cabana. Uh, depending on, you know, when the homeowner would decide to do that. In order to install that pool, there is a coverage variance that we'll be seeking, um, in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, there are also, because of the way that this lot is is sort of oriented, and I know you can see this here, um, that the portion of the yard where the pool is gonna be installed is although sort of acts like a side yard or rear yard, is actually the front yard. So because the front yard setback for a pool is three times what a normal setback would be, that sort of pushes the pool, the patio, pool equipment and everything that's associated with this construction into a into a variance condition as well.
So could you, could you explain to us for the record how a property is then is six point two three one acres in size in a hard two district, doesn't have enough room to get the pool in a place that doesn't require a variance, it sounds like a lot of property.
It 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 is a lot of property, um, so there there are two reasons for that.
So there there are two reasons for that.
One being the fact that the property has two separate entrances, which it looks like were sort of remnants of uh past past constructions and newer subdivisions that took place over the years. There's also historically, there's there's a multitude of older concrete staircases and um sort of patio areas here, down here, there's more concrete staircases. Over here, there's more like sort of ornate, you know, garden type walls and terraces and everything that that's existing, and all these need to be added into that coverage, according to town code.
Coverage, according to that code.
So they, you know, just the stairs and walls alone in in each areas are almost four thousand square feet. Bringing the coverage over, you know, just just for that, so that's mostly what's going on here. Just that it's an older property and it has some um some of these older improvements that are that are sort of indicative of that.
Okay, that takes care of the coverage question. The other question is, on a huge piece of property like this, um why can't you make the three times the footage setback requirements?
Well, that's that's a question, that is a question I can answer as well.
Why doesn't that be so close?
Let me see if I can uh stop sharing here, just reshare sort of a different view here. Hold on one second, I'm just gonna connect my screen up. That that question is mainly to do with a few things, so here's a little bit of a different view of the property.
A few things.
This is the location where the pool would go. Back here, we have, we you know, we have a body of order that we need to maintain a distance to. The only real level areas of the property are all within the front yard here, all this is really not conducive to pool construction at all. Um, it's hard to get to, it it would not be easy to Um it's hard to get to, it it would not be easy to construct in to build the pool. Um and I'm not sure that we can meet steep slope or any of the other setbacks that we would need to meet from wetlands, one or the other in order to do that. So really, you know, the area that it makes sense is anywhere over here, whereas, you know, it's being proposed now.
Is anywhere over here, whereas, you know, it's being proposed now.
And they actually were gonna put it a little bit closer to the house, but due to the septic system being in that area, we had to push it back a little bit into into sort of this corner here. So you can see this is like where it would be. Right where these sort of existing areas are. So all this area is really, it's just unusable for for pool.
So all this area is really.
As far as like from a construction perspective and from a permitting perspective too for steep slopes.
From a construction perspective and from a permitting perspective too for steep slopes.
Got you, thank you. Next question. You have two two entrance driveways, um does that make, I'm gonna ask our our billing inspector that, does that make this a corner lot?
The second driveway doesn't go out to the road, it's an easement through another property.
Ah, so it's not really a corner lot, because a corner lot would have two front yards.
Yes.
And that would make it a lot easier for us?
Yeah.
But okay, just for the record, um. Hey, those are the extended my questions. Are anybody in the audience or online who'd like to address this application?
No hands are raised.
No hands raised, no hands raised here, no problem. Board, anybody have a question, concern, comment?
I I I I have some concern just about the develop the coverage. Um given to your point, Mr. Chairman, that it is a large piece of land and um there seem to be a lot of probably ancillary steps and and other cement features that have, has it been considered to remove any of those items at all?
So um I I would like, you know, I I have the homeowner on here as well, Michael Kadash can maybe answer that question. But you know, they they do have some historical value that that I don't feel like they're wanna take that characteristic away from the property. But you feel like it's one of the reasons why, you know, speaking with Michael, he purchased the property and to, you know, to to eliminate some of that sort of, let's say, old world charm that the property has to just in install. You know, a a new pool is not something I traded at the beginning of the year.
But I'd like Michael to do that.
Yeah, that thank you, I agree. I I would agree, I think if you saw that, Jeremy, if you'd like to pull up the picture, you got the picture handy. I think it would show, it would show, this was the original house on the lot.
I don't know.
I can hold it to you there, yeah.
This was the original house. And it was originally constructed, I wanna say in the eighteen hundreds, and then renovated again in two thousand, in two thousand.
It was originally constructed.
Um where they just added a, they they sort of removed the above portion and then just built a new home going outboard.
Sort of removed the above portion.
Um keeping the stone intact, that matches the staircase and then everything, Jeremy just hung it out. Um the easter egress, the even the driveways, they're all there because they originally sold off the parcels and the inability to build around. Um and there are four or five other houses surrounding us here that all have actually have pools.
Yeah.
So being the last one, um the most historic one, and you can you can find the names of the original owners back in the day etched around some of these things. This isn't something that I wanna even think about taking out, I don't think anybody would. Um it is it's it's beautiful, it's a little old, um but it's really stunning, um and a big reason we built the house.
Okay.
This is one of these pictures and there are videos online if you're interested.
Can I just ask?
Okay.
I just wanna ask one further question on this, just seeing this down. Other than the the stairs that we're you're showing, I understand that that's a big portion of the development coverage. Have you have you looked any other places where you might be able to at least take some of it off?
We have so to to answer that question, um yes, we we have spent probably, you know, a combined thirty to forty hours
To answer that question, yes.
between me and and Michael and his architect and the landscape architect, trying to see where there are pieces that we could uh remove from and and short of, you know, ripping out an entire driveway entrance and and causing a lot more disturbance
And causing a lot more disturbance.
or, you know, taking down some of these walls or stairs, there really isn't much else to take it from.
There really isn't much else to take it from.
I mean, it it really is the the driveways and the walls and the stairs, if you look at the breakdowns of the coverage, um and I'll I'll actually pull that up here, so we can see that as well, because that's. Let me just. There we go. So if you look at sort of all these existing coverage areas, I mean, it's driveways, walls, stairs, walls, stairs, walls, stairs, walls, stairs, walls, stairs, walls, stairs. I mean, that's really it. Um the only other pieces are are the house itself, two two other little patios, which we're gonna sort of use to step onto that new pool area.
Two two other little patios.
Um and that's really all there is, there isn't really much to take from, unless you wanna take some of these walls away, which are which are characteristic of the property or or eliminate an entrance. Um so we didn't really see a way that we could get it in there without without eliminating something that that's gonna really take away from the property.
A way that we could get it in.
And trust me, we looked really hard, because you know, it doesn't, nobody wants to take the time to go from zoning, obviously.
And trust me, we looked really hard, because you know, it doesn't.
Um because it just kinda kills time on the project, but we we just really could not find another way around it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So what you're telling us is the existing over coverage was not created by the homeowner, was created.
No, I don't even think by the many previous owners.
It was created previously by other owners and it's it's my impression by what you said and what I just saw in pictures. Uh some of it may be maybe not really, but maybe possibly historical in value, uh and it does add to the property. And.
It definitely, I mean, I don't know if it's actually historical in value, but it's definitely.
No, I'm not saying it is actually, but there may be some some consensus about that or some uh some idea that this this these these structures were built in a historical context uh and do add to the thing. Um it's my opinion now that they do add to the property, they there's there's something unique. Uh I know that the property and the house itself has a unique situation. So I have less and less concern about uh the coverage problems here. Um my colleagues will have their own concerns, I'm sure, but I'm just giving you my input. Okay, um. Did we did we ask if anybody wanted to speak to this one? Yeah, I don't remember even doing that, we got involved here. Is is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this application or anybody online that would like to speak to this application?
Yeah.
No hands are raised online.
No raised hands online, no raised hands in the audience, that's good. Is anybody, any concerns or we up up to speed here?
No. Let's go.
All right, in that circumstance, I will move that we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzey.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Derazan.
Aye.
Okay. Shut up, sweetie of motion, board?
Warren, Warren.
Okay. Uh listen, I take a motion on the application of Michael Megan Kish, uh this is seven fifteen King Street. And they've been in application to construct an in-ground pool within a Jason patio and a future cabana. Uh they are essentially, well, they're seeking a little variances. First, they are seeking a development coverage variance, uh two thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet. They, uh with respect to the swimming pool, uh which is located in the front yard, uh there are there are basically the the setback uh becomes uh three times district setback when it's installed in the front yard. So and the patio, we'll talk about that first, uh the patio, they're requesting a front yard variance of a hundred and thirty feet. For the pool, they're requesting a variance of a hundred and twenty feet. For the pool equipment, the requested variance is a front yard variance of fifty-three feet. And for the cabana, the requested variance is forty-four feet. Uh and again, in each of these instances, uh the variance is from the three times uh setback that is required when the pool is in the front yard. So uh to go through the various factors that we consider looking in this application. Uh first, we'll grant the variance create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. No, I don't think so at all, um and there seems to be an effort to preserve um some very longstanding, potentially historically valuable aspects of the property. Um can the benefit be, uh saw be achieved by some other method? We've actually asked on the record tonight, the applicant, fair number of questions about that with respect to both the development coverage variance uh and the setback variances and uh you know, there are a number of issues with respect to the development coverage variance. Uh there are two separate entrances to the property and the stairs and walls along the property, which have been there for quite some time predating the uh property owner's purchase. Again, uh or drive word, however, the purchase of the property and also against them to have some historical value to them. Uh with respect to the straight var- setback variances, uh it looks like the topography of the land, even though there is a significant portion, a significant elevation topography, makes it uh relatively difficult uh to place the pool without starting to get into uh issues of slope, uh I think there may be a wetland issue you may start to get into, and there were also septic fields that we heard about as well. So it does not seem that you can really achieve this uh by any other uh method. Are the requested variances substantial? Uh I I don't, you know, you are going over the co- the development coverage variance, um but again, we in light of the constraints they run under, I don't think they really are substantial. Same goes for the setback variances. Will there be an adverse effect from the physical environment conditions in the neighborhood? No. Uh is this alleged difficulty self-created? Yeah, arguably it it is, you wanna put the pool uh on the property, doesn't have to be there, if you're gonna put it there. Um you know, that is a self-creating hardship, however, uh the benefit to the property owner is certainly outweighs any detriment to the community. Tom, is there anything you need, Tom?
A foundation survey and a final survey.
Okay. Foundation survey and a final survey um will be required. Um applicant shall have six months to start and one year to finish. Can I can I just add one item to that motion? Great motion.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. I wanna I wanna I wanna, this is a difficult one. I wanna add my usual swimming pool caveat and I I'll do that because.
Okay. Sure. You can I.
First of all, I'm assuming this is a gunite pool. Mr. Applicant.
I I believe so, Mike would have to answer that question. Michael, are you doing a gunite pool or was it a different means? I believe it is.
Is he still?
You're you're on mute still, Mike.
Sorry about that.
Uh yes.
It's a gunite pool, okay. When you do a gunite pool, we've had problems in the past with locations. Uh when you're ready and your and your uh wire mesh is in place, your rebar is in place, before you shoot the gunite, we're gonna require a a survey, test the location. Um we wanna be sure it's right where it's supposed to be, because once you shoot the gunite, you're stuck with it. Uh and we've had in the past some some problems and we don't wanna make you take the pool out after the gunite sets up. So we're gonna require you to give us a survey before you shoot the gunite. Um and if everything is where it's supposed to be, go right ahead and finish the job. That's part of my application, is part of your requirements. Other than that, I have nothing else to say.
I'm gonna ask for a second to the motion.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzey.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Derazan.
Aye.
Have your uh variance, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. We're gonna take a five minute break before we go on to our next case.
Thank you, we're back.
Okay.
Thanks, applicant.
Thank you. Well, uh, Mr. Chairman.
My question, Graham, just...
Uh, Graalitzer?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, I'm Scott Herson, I'm the architect of record representing Michelle and Keith Graalitzer, the homeowners of Two Hemlock Hills. We are here tonight seeking a variance of nine feet to our rear yard setback in order to accommodate a replacement of an existing deck that is failing. And the existing deck, this is a corner lot, we have it in a regular shape. It was part of a development that was constructed at the same time. This is our exist- Our existing survey here is showing the complete boundary of the property. And this is the file for the variance, showing the small triangle, which in total, totals a hundred thirty five square feet.
Are you aware of the letters that we received? One in opposition and one in favor?
Yes, yes.
And, well, I mean, yeah, I'd like to do it, I think we'd like to come and do any of that, and then we're arguing too. But give, give us whatever information you can offer.
So as often happens, we filed for the variance because we've done different studies and realized this is the plan that best fits the needs of our client. And more specifically, there was on the original plan showing the foundation, a vertical storage unit, which was part of the structure of a fireplace that was set up on the deck. So to file-
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt for a second? Just for the record, to be clear, I just want to make sure we're referring to the, uh, the objection letter. Anyway, uh, of Ann and Robert Natali, dated April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, and received on that date, is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
So, to further clarify, the filing and the nature will be put in. I'm gonna turn to the page, on the next page of this. So again, here is our existing deck. This is our proposed deck. In the drawings that were viewed by the neighbors as part of our public announcement, we had indicated that there was gonna be a structure coming down that was labeled as storage with a fireplace above. In further evaluation of our design, we revisited that. And there is still a fireplace that would be mounted onto the deck itself. But we are instead of having that closed storage here, extending storage beneath the staircase in line to the foundation wall, concealing existing propane tanks. And that was really, I think, a big part of the objection, was let the view up would be of said deck.
So you're gonna be concealing the, the propane tanks?
Correct.
Uh, in the storage under the deck?
Yes. And the conversation on the TV was a blocking detail. We were asking for future to, just as we do for, uh, handrails and guardrails for ADA, I'm asking a input blocking inside of this framing, this metal frame chimney for a non-venting fireplace, if it were to mount a TV.
So what, so you're not gonna do that, you just have a future, future plan?
It's, it's this detail.
Okay.
Because I was talking to Tom about the details of how to brace said fireplace.
Right, right, okay. So, question, Tom. If they, they're not gonna do this as, as now. In the future, if they wanted to put this fireplace in, would they have to come back to the building? Not, not necessarily to us, but to the building department for approval, or how would that work? Would they even have to have a permit for it, or what is the procedure for that?
If I understand correctly, you're not building the fireplace now?
No, we, we are putting a fireplace, it doesn't have the foundation down to the ground, which has generated a lot of confusion.
Ah, okay, I thought, I thought you just said that you're putting the blocking in for the future, fireplace that was gonna be fixed in.
There was a lot of concern about noise and elements relating to a TV that was in the blocking detail.
Well, that was gonna be our next question, we're gonna get, we're gonna get into that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the fireplace is going to be built.
Correct, yes, that was a part of the variance.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, doesn't need a foundation, it's gonna be supported by the deck. Okay. I get it, I see that. So it'll be open under the deck.
Correct.
With, with the screening for the propane tanks, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. Following the line of the staircase.
Yep, yep, okay. So let's address the TV. Now, the neighbors seem to have quite concern about the TV and the potential noise intrusion into their property. Could you get into that for us, please?
So, a few things. We did, oh, we did review a few configurations of this outdoor space. And we thoughtfully were orienting said TV towards the building, which is consistent with putting outdoor speakers into landscape in order to direct the music or sound, whatever you're listening to, onto your property opposed to conveying or transmitting in the opposite direction. So the, the house as it exists now does have speakers mounted on it facing out. And to, as I understand, there's never been an issue of noise in the five years that my client has been in residence.
So you're saying you have speakers inside the house?
No, there's already outdoor audio on this house, they, yes.
There is outdoor audio, okay.
Yes, yes.
Because you know, there is, there are some requirements and restrictions about, uh...
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Audio equipment in the outdoor areas.
Yes.
And you will be complying with that?
Correct.
And if not, then you'll, you'll be talking to the building department, I'm sure, soon. Okay, that's, that's a good question answered. Next question, were there, were, um, there were concerns about screening, about the removal of some, uh, trees, et cetera, on the property line, facing the, the neighbor who is having some difficulties with this one? Can you tell us about the removal of the screening that was existing, and if there's any plan to be pulled back?
So there's, definitely, there definitely will be planting after the deck is done. This is our priority, means of access to the rear yard without going over the septic. But our silk fence in all construction we're doing does not require the removal of any trees in the rear yard.
No, I know that. But there were, there was some question about, in the past, there were some trees that were helping to, helping to, just to, to,
That had fallen or were dangerous.
Obstruct the view of the neighbor's property onto their, onto your property and vice versa. Am I correct in saying that some of that has been removed, not, not in conjunction with the deck itself, but for other reasons?
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that. My name is Keith Graalitzer, I'm the homeowner, and...
Uh, uh, please, nothing, into the one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, my name is Keith Graalitzer, and I'm the homeowner of Two Hemlock Hollow. The removal of any trees that occurred on our property were only because they were dead, damaged, or fell after a storm. That was it. There was no cosmetic removal of trees on our property. They've been there since twenty twenty one, and anything that's been removed has been removed because of that.
Okay, alright.
So, just to address that.
Do you, do you have any plan to, uh, reinstitute any screening?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we're looking forward to adding a lot of screening to the backyard once the deck is complete and once the landscape plans are, are put together from that perspective.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm okay. Board, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I, I, you know, I understand the concern about noise, uh, on, from neighbors, they ignore us in the property. And, um, I, I assume that we have a decibel level maximum, even, you know, not between eight PM and ten AM. I, I have to assume we have requirements for...
If I might answer that question?
Yeah.
The Noise Code, Chapter ninety, addresses decibel levels at the property lines. Yes, there is established a decibel level.
So I would just want to be sure that, you know, any outdoor speakers, whether they're facing the house or facing out, um, would meet those requirements. I think, you know, I think that's a big quality of life issue. I, I'm sure you feel the same.
I do, that's correct.
Uh, so I think, uh, that would be something that I, I just would want to be certain that, you know, there isn't noise spilling out into neighbors' properties.
My intention would not to have any excessive decibel noise. And at this moment, while the plan allocates a box for a television, we haven't decided if that's something we're even going to put in. A young family, we want to enjoy our outdoor space. We've been members of this community for fifteen years and have never had a noise violation or hosted a party or done anything other than just wanted to live on it.
Right, but as you know, neighbors frequently don't want to say anything they feel it, you know, it could cause bad blood. So they're, I think people generally are standoffish in, in creating any kind of potential conflict. So that's why I would rather just forestall that possibility, just be certain that, uh, you know, that we're in line with the noise requirements of the town. I, I think that's, that to me is very important.
Fully intend to comply with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have another question. Have you any hear from, like, anybody? I see that we have some people in the audience.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? I kinda thought there were. Please come forward.
Thank you. My name is Anne Natali, and I reside at Three Hemlock Hills with my husband. We built the house at Three Hemlock Hills twenty-five years ago, and we are the authors of the letter to which you were referring, uh, earlier. We have loved our life in Chappaqua these twenty-five years and are hoping that the remainder of our lives play out here. I want to thank all of you for this opportunity to speak. My prepared remarks will be brief, um, a little briefer than the letter that we provided you last week. My husband, Robert, and I were not aware of the plan to request a setback variance at Two Hemlock Hollow, the property adjoining our home, until we received the zoning board, uh, notice, um, last week or two weeks ago. And it was only yesterday that we spoke with Keith and Michelle Graalitzer of their plans. As you know, from our letter, we are opposed to granting the Graalitzers' request as the plans now exist. And those plans are different from what we've just heard discussed. They have been altered in the last twenty-four hours.
We were trying to also have the rednies help you to see what it looked like.
Okay. So this is all new to us, and in some respects, different from the plans that we have been looking at for the last ten days or so, I'm sorry. Their application asks for a substantial ten-foot variance, that's what we were told, not nine, as we heard this evening, from the minimum rear yard setback to expand their deck. Uh, and it is within the specific proposed area of variance that the deck is designed to house a TV with a separate speaker box and fireplace. The plans also appear to call for the removal of a significant number of mature trees along the property line. We've counted them. It's quite a considerable number, although we understand that, that fewer will be affected. Robert and I strongly believe that the proposed expansion will adversely impact our quality of life in four significant ways. First, we are very concerned that an outdoor TV with separate speakers, particularly one that is housed within the area of variance so close to our home, hinge on the peace and enjoyment of our property. Our backyard is our oasis. I don't know if you have the photographs that we submitted with our letter. But in two thousand and five, we created it where none existed before. Our backyard has a radical slope, just like the Graalitzers'. And to achieve a level lawn and terrace, we built retaining walls, we backfilled, we heavily landscaped the area. The backyard today is our piece of heaven and one of the great joys of our life in Chappaqua, and I garden, by the way. Second, in addition to potential sound issues, there is the potential risk of increased water runoff and soil erosion as the proposal appears to call for the removal of a great many trees. Our property at Three Hemlock Hills is wet, like so much of Chappaqua, we realize. But there is a lot of water that dumps directly onto our property. We've worked very hard to mitigate the effects of street and soil runoff. One of the things we did was to build a curtain drain fifteen feet in, in depth, in parts, that runs to three sides of our septic fields. This was done back in two thousand and three. Since then, the property has been in a state of balance, but that balance is disrupted during heavy rains when a farmer's well, that we are told is a hundred to a hundred fifty years old, it's in the middle of our wet garden, um, becomes overwhelmed. That farmer's well runs under our neighbor's lawns, down to Barnes Pond. Our concern is that the Graalitzers' continued elimination of mature trees will invite even more water flow onto our property and that of our neighbors who are here tonight, the Peter Godey and Mario Giordano. Third, the elimination of multiple trees near the property line poses two other potential problems. These trees are mature, and their green canopies provide both sight and sound baffles for us. And without this leafy cover, we have absolutely no privacy in relation to the Graalitzer property because their deck is at the same height as our second floor, the top of our second floor. Last, and just as important as these concerns, is the further potential compromise of our view shed. For the last four years, the area under the Graalitzers' deck, which is on full view to us and to anyone walking or driving the neighborhood, has been the resting place for three large white propane tanks. The, the, uh, neighbors previously had one. Old deck furniture, soccer nets, I, we provided a photograph of this. And I, I understand that now that there are revisions to the plan that will conceal some of this, that it's more than the propane tanks that we find unsightly. It's the collection of other items that are, that are stored there. So we believe that enlarging the potential storage area, which is what an enlarged deck provides, and moving it closer to our yard will exacerbate the unsightliness from our vantage point. So we'd like to accommodate our neighbors. We want them to be happy in their home. But we feel that the design should be revised to accommodate our needs as well. We believe that compromise is the essence of neighborliness. A variance to build a larger deck is one thing. A variance to house a TV, which is for us, the single most problematic and intrusive aspect of the design plan, is quite another, particularly when the Graalitzers have the property to put the TV somewhere else. The deck that they are constructing, I, wraps around, is, I don't know, has this changed in elevation any since the drawings that we were provided?
No, the, the deck plan itself is exactly the same, it's just the foundation.
But the land is, it rises higher than is shown here. So that they, they actually, to our way of thinking, have access to a level area, to this side of the house, to the west side.
Which is their side yard off formal living room, two fireplaces blocking, but, and the septic field.
Well...
And a downwards slope.
In, in part, the septic field is over here. There is, there is land here, there's also area here. The corner for which they're asking to extend the deck is what is nearest our house. It is here, and this is, as you can see, where the TV is, is planned, the location of the TV. So, in exchange for the requested variance, we would respective, respectfully ask the Graalitzers and the Board of Appeals to relocate the TV to another part of the deck, that they avoid removing any more mature trees from the area between our backyards. And I, I could say more about those trees that, that have come down, because I don't think that it was really addressed in detail in our letter. And that they install recessed panels or screens beneath the new deck to conceal the propane tanks and other items. So I don't, um, I I don't know how to read these drawings. I just, I'm just seeing them for the first time.
So, uh, to kind of, to come off of what you had just said about the compromise as well, the, this whole area, so from your, from your vantage point here, the staircase hugs the back of the house all the way along the rear, would be, would be screening. So this, and let me go back to the.
So this is all new? This is not in the drawings that we saw.
Yes, we were.
These, these, I mean, so this.
Well, just, just to clarify, it it it's actually the only thing that has changed. We added this in response to your conversation about having screening come across.
Underneath.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Cause we agree that when they make the investment in this deck, they would like to not see a propane tank. Similarly, we were reviewing the height of the chimney and the detail of the chimney,
Yes.
which at the base was closed storage and decide, determined that it would be better just to have the chimney reside fully on the deck itself.
Hmm. Where it rests was not an issue for us.
Yeah.
It's the fact that it houses a TV and separate amplifier, speaker, sound amplifier.
And, uh, the, uh, my, I'm Robert Natali.
Well.
Um, and once the variance is granted, there's an opportunity to put the TV in at any time if if there's no, if there's no proviso against it. And it's really the location of the television. We don't think it would be a hardship if it was moved. Because it's, we're, we're talking about a deck that is going to almost triple in size.
So there is other surface area, I I believe is what Robert is, the the point that he's, that that he's making.
Yeah, we don't think it would be a hardship.
Um. As as I say, the 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 surface area of the deck is not the issue for us, that they want to extend that. It's that, in that very area, that ten feet or nine feet you 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 said tonight, that that is where the television and speakers will be. And i- if I may remark on something that was said earlier about the speakers on on the house, the Grelitzers have not been able to use their deck. So we don't know how they will use amplified sound.
Well, I mean, we, I currently have a barbecue out there.
We, we have not.
Please, please come up to the line.
Oh, sorry, hi. Hi, I'm Michelle Grelitzer. Hi, everybody.
I mean, yes, our deck, we moved to our house in twenty twenty-one. We lived in another house in Chappaqua previously since twenty fourteen. But, um, just to address the deck, yes, we, you know, moved into this house and the deck definitely needs to be redone and disrepair. But currently, you know, we still do have a barbecue on it. As a matter of fact, Keith barbecues every night out there with like our kids and we have a smoker out there. Um, we have a table and chairs out there. We we are out there, but it's not used to the full potential of our property. For example, like, you can see it's small here. This is where our current barbecue is. So, yeah, I mean, we're out there, we have it. It's not that we don't use it, it's just we'd like to have its full potential of our backyard is really what we're asking for. That's what I wanted to add, that we do use it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I just ask one question, just for clarification?
Please, yes.
Um, because I did read your letter and thank you for submitting that. Well, at at the end of your letter, you didn't, one of the yeses that you have is that no outdoor TV or sound amplification equipment will be installed on the deck. But what I'm hearing from you is that.
We've, we have backed.
Oh, okay.
Because that was submitted before we met with the Grelitzers. So our, we are requesting just the three items that I mentioned this evening, that we, that the TV is relocated to another portion of the deck, be it here, may I, do you mind if I touch it?
Sure.
Um. Be it behind their, their, um, I'm sorry. Their family room.
Some bed.
Or the lower deck that wraps around, at least on the drawings that we were given.
Mm-hmm.
That 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 wraps around the side of the house, there's another room, um, here. And, you know.
So that is an office, so, so.
I think it's clear, I, well, this, these are different drawings. That's why I'm not relating to them. I'm, I'm thinking of the ones that we've had for the last ten, twelve days.
I have those here as well, if that will help you orient yourself because, as I said, it was just the foundation that shifted. This is what was the actual footprint, everything is the same.
Okay, so, uh, this, this is what I mean. This is, this is the house. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
This is the upper deck, this is the lower deck, steps to the lower deck. And we're looking at this and wondering why the outdoor living rooms, so to speak, cannot be located in this area or even potentially over here. We we don't understand why it has to be. And by the way, if if the. We, I I think I was clear that we are not objecting to a larger deck. It's what that piece of the deck, that ten-foot-deep triangle will accommodate that we are upset about.
So, from a space planning perspective and a utility perspective, it is an outdoor, an outdoor dining seating space adjacent to the family room and the kitchen. The other location, besides having all of the mechanicals in that area, is off of the home office of the client, making it the least desirable place. We actually expanded that as a place for them to enjoy off their working room, but certainly not to be seating as you would in the upper level. I mean, we do not have the depth of backyard that you get to enjoy.
That we created.
And, correct. And so you can appreciate, I don't know how much engineering went into the tiering of your backyard, but every sight wall over three feet in height requires full engineering and an extraordinary amount of backfill.
Yes.
And it does create an incredible amount of storm-water erosion concern, which is why we've sought to stay where we are to to maximize utility for the homeowner of the deck, certainly not in any way to detract from your side view or any other encumbrance in terms of acoustics. And so that's.
The backfill, just to, um, qualify something that you said, can also act as an absorber of water, as it has on our property for all of the runoff that we receive from the Grelitzer property. So, you know, the the Grelitzers have the option of putting in retaining walls here and they would not be anywhere near the height that we put in to level our backyard.
Um.
Because we had a deck that hovered as many feet as theirs above the deck before we did our work.
But again, the deck is leveled to the first floor of the house. So it's not, it wasn't about the height of the deck to the grade. It was about just.
No, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that you would tend to do it in that, in the corner where you're seeking the variance. I'm simply saying that where an outdoor living room is sought, there is, there are options for it in behind the Grelitzer's house that are, you know, other than going for that corner of the deck that would require the set, the rear, the rear yard setback variance. Um, it's, and as we stood in their backyard yesterday and looked down at our property, you know, the trees are just starting to leaf. It was just so obvious that our, our lives, everything that plays out in the backyard is going to be on full view to them on this deck if the trees are removed, if the deck, well, if the deck is extended another ten feet and the trees are removed. And there, there are a considerable number of trees that have come down, not just the ones that had broken limbs that, um, Keith Grelitzer was referencing the fact that there was a limb that fell from their tree um, and crushed a part of our deer fence, um, two years ago. And I think that 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 tree was, uh, you know, that that you took that down after that, that you found that it was diseased. But there are other trees that were removed that were not diseased and they were quite substantial in size. And, I'm sorry.
Yes, if I could just add something, you know, this based on what we saw with our, you know, um, there were, there there's something like fifteen, somewhere in between fifteen and twenty trees on the original site.
Site drawings, you know.
Site drawings, and they are not there here.
Because they're outside of the range. It's not because they're removed.
It's not because, because, you know, the, see, the thing is, we, you know, you've got pine trees noted here,
Mm-hmm.
but nothing here. So that gave us considerable pause.
So Dennis has has visited the same trees that are here and here, like just, this is, this is.
So the trees are not gonna be touched?
No, no, no.
Okay.
And just like they've upgraded the front landscape.
Yes.
The next piece of this would be, once the driveway is cleaned up and they're done constructing, to obviously graciously welcome people. I think that what's gonna happen, and I hope, with all the projects that we do locally. I live in Chappaqua also and previously lived in a house that was below my neighbor. And so I'm very sensitive to what you're talking about. And so the intention here by rotating it in the way that it is, is to not have you be on display, but to really have them be confined in such a way that they are not, you, you both have your privacy, is really the true intention. And certainly, I think, you know, the green giants, of course, are a solution. But I anticipate that there'll be a much more sophisticated planting plan because this is intended to be.
Well, see, the issue is though that with, with landscaping, with all respect, is that the slope is so steep that it won't be in my lifetime that those trees will ever get to the area of the deck and maybe not the Grelitzer's long time.
But again, what you see now is the baseline. Everything else is gonna be planted. Like, that's, I want to really clarify.
But, but those.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that.
That, 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 that this area here is exactly the same. If you follow the silt, the silt fence here
Mm-hmm.
and and this line, um, we get an elevation height. The line of four sixty-one comes down here. There's four sixty-one, it should come around here. So our silt fence will be in front of this eighteen-inch maple. We're nowhere near any of those trees.
Okay, well, that, that's a relief because we, yeah.
One remark, one remark on what we saw though. When, when we were at the house yesterday and we stood, um, in the driveway turnaround area and looked at the side of the deck, we saw that the overhang and were marked on the overhang of the large trees. And with that said to ourselves, of course, those, those branches are gonna go. Maybe the trees are going to come down. They're, they're, they're there. And, um, we, we have no confidence that they are going to be left intact because they do encroach on the build-out. So, you know, it, it is, it is TV, sound amplification. Clearly, what is, that is planned for that particular corner of the deck is going to be the nerve center of, 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 of the activity that unfolds on that deck. Where there is a TV, you know, in most homes, TV becomes the wallpaper of people's lives. So, the idea that the TV, the fireplace should be that close to our house and that there is the potential of our losing the screen, that sound and sight baffle, is just, I, it, it's, it's terribly concerning to us. And we, we don't see that it is a hardship for the Grelitzers to think about putting their outdoor living room. You know, I, I, we understand the, the, the desire to have a larger dining area just outside the, the, the kitchen. And, and so, as I say, we are perfectly amenable to their, their making a larger deck. But, but we don't understand why it would be a hardship to move the outdoor living room to another, um, place in the backyard. Whether it's on, you know, the topography is, is as it currently is or some retaining walls of the type that you, you mentioned are, are put into place to level things. It's, um, so, I'm sorry, I don't wanna drone on.
Okay, thank you.
And there are probably others who would want to, would like to speak. I, um. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others that would like to speak in this application?
With the water issues.
Sir, yeah.
It's like at the end of it.
Exactly. Yeah, uh, so Mario and I came here tonight just to, uh.
And your name is?
Peter Goday, eighty-one Campfire Road.
For the record, thank you.
Yeah, lived in Chappaqua for twenty-seven years. So, um, yeah, just, uh, concerned as far as tree removal and, uh, we've got a lot of water that comes down through our property, Mario's property. And we've all done a lot. We've had backhoe, a backhoe come in and make sure that we had it all taken care of. Um, so it was kind of a joint neighborhood project to make sure that we were all working together to make sure that the water, um, in a big storm, and obviously we've had some big storms in Chappaqua with the hurricanes and things like that. So, um, yeah, I just, just wanna make sure that, uh, the tree removal is not going to increase the water flow to a point where we'll be concerned with flooding. And when we first moved in many years ago, um, there was, uh, we do have flooding. Uh, so we, we took the, uh, we made, made some remedies. They've worked for many years. We just wanna make sure that, uh, if there's any tree removal, that it doesn't change that and, and give us a threat of flood.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Mario Giordano, eighty-seven Campfire Road. I have the same concern. Uh, the Natalies are on the corner. Peter's, the Godets, an eighty-one campfire, I'm eighty-seven campfire. I'm the proud owner of the, uh, Barnes, uh, Pond. So all that water ends up in the Barnes, uh, Barnes Pond and it, and travels down to the watershed. Um, we get a tremendous amount of water coming down the road from across the street. I don't know how that ever got approved, but way past, way before me. Um, I, 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 we built a brand new home there, uh, back in, uh, twenty twelve. Um, the water line is in the front yard. When we were digging, uh, on wet days, is about that much. So I always have nice lush green, uh, grass. I don't need any more water. So my main concern in our neighborhood is water. Um, if trees are removed, more erosion, more water ends up on the tally, ends up on Pete's, cause water flows downhill as we all know. So it ends up on my property and it becomes an issue. I'll have some water in the basement once in a while. Um, we built a darn beautiful home and I don't need any more water. That's my concern.
Thank you.
So any remediation that needs to be done to accommodate them, nobody's looking to take away their, uh, their lives. There's remediation that could, that could be implemented. There could be, uh, plantings that could absorb, uh, retaining walls that could divert, drainage that could be absorbed. All of these things are available, uh, that could divert all this water from my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any more comments from the board?
Um, maybe the architects would like to talk about what's being done specifically for drainage as part of this work, if you will?
So, because the deck is, is lifted as it is, we are certainly going to make sure that all existing foundation drains that would channel any water off of our existing building are not damaged or clogged in any way that would change the way in which water is shed from our specific building. The deck is not, um, does not have any gutters on it itself. Water will be able to pass through. There will be crushed gravel placed beneath the deck. And typically, we also have a metal edge band to, uh, there is a detail that I like. The lan- a landscape designer might choose to actually create a plant bed, but I typically like to have a straight edge that follows the, out the drip line of my decks to start grass and stop runoff from missing gravel.
One other question, I, I have a question on the, uh, Mr. Architect.
Oh, God.
We're gonna get away with that soon. So what I've just heard is that no existing trees are gonna be removed when you build this deck.
Correct.
Am I right in that?
Correct.
So all the concerns in the neighborhood about removal of trees and, and, uh, of his shed are alleviated, so to speak?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and you do have potential future plantings in your plan just for the beautification of the property?
Correct.
Okay. Um, good. With regard to the TV, um, I understand the neighbor's concerns. I really do. But the zoning code doesn't address TVs. We have a code that addresses potential noise problems. We have a code that addresses potential noise problems which would affect a TV, a radio, a uh, any kind of sound reproduction, uh, which would be out of our purview. Uh, and I think that the uh, uh, the correct remediation from the neighborhood would be if these, if the TV or the sound equipment, it comes a disturbance, then that's the place to go for relief. It's, it's really not here.
Could I respond to that?
Come on up.
We're trying to prevent uh, the kind of thing that you're describing. No one likes to have to call the police and no one likes to receive a call from the police to talk about sound. And we're just trying to prevent. This is, this is the one opportunity the town has to prevent these kinds of things from happening. And so we do not think that it would be all that difficult to move the TV out of the variance request. And I still would think, with all due respect to you, that it would not be a, a major inconvenience.
Understood, but you have to realize that our, our motions on this board are not for particular neighborhoods, not for neighbors, not for particular homeowners. These, but these, these variances that we reissue run with the land. They are in perpetuity. There's nothing to say what's going to happen five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now that may be a problem because of our decisions here tonight or whatever night we do it on. Um, like I say, I, if, if there were going to be severe viewshed uh, concerns or drainage concerns, we would issue that, we would address that right now because it's, it's a future protection for future homeowners and everything. This, the, the, the placement of equipment on a deck, whether it be chairs, tables, TVs, whatever, uh, is, is of such a variable extent and such, and, and such a um, personalized thing. Then it's unfair for us to get into that, especially when we do have laws in town that do address potential certain uh, neighborhood problems, such as noise.
Even within a variance.
I understand what you're saying, but i- i- if there were, if, if we did not have a law that, that said you have to keep your decimal level at such and such a, uh, point during the day and such and such a point during the evening, I would say, yeah, okay, we can do something about that because there's a severe potential. I don't think the potential here is that severe. And, and the, and the uh, and, and the cure for those problems are there. I mean, I know, I, I don't like to have to call the police for anything, just as much, as much as you do or anybody else.
Or if somebody receive a call.
Or we see, I don't wanna receive a call either. But the po- the point is that there, there is a relief for this kind of situation. And it's, it's really not up to us to speculate on what the problem's going to be and try to stop it all by issuing variances that are uh, running with the land for in perpetuity that may, may not, may or may not be of any value later on or today. I, I, I have, I'd have a problem with that. I would have a severe, much more problem if what they were building was giving you a runoff problem, uh, and didn't meet the requirements of our uh, our code on that regard. Or if, like I say, if your, your potential changes to a view shed are going to seriously affect you. Because what I heard tonight is it's not going to happen and it's also gonna protect you more because they're going to do an additional planting for the uh.
Yes, that was not in the original plan.
Which to me is a good thing to hear.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, and I'm, I'm glad they're going to do it. I'm not speaking for my colleagues, I'm speaking for myself, but uh, the TV situation, if, if I had anything to say about it uh, would not be part of our approval.
I have two questions.
Yes, please.
What, what would guarantee that there is no tree removal after this variance is received?
Uh, actually, there's no guarantee. Um, but if you, if, if you're severely concerned about it and my colleagues are in agreement, uh, I would entertain the prospect of putting something in our motion that would require um, the maintenance of some sort of uh, uh, plantings to, to protect a view shed.
It's not just plantings, and this isn't an issue of view shed, this is privacy. This is the canopy that we're talking about, that, 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 that prevents um, that, that, that gives us privacy and, and a sound baffle for that.
And what I heard tonight, that canopy is not going to be disturbed.
No, but I'm saying what guarantees that those trees that provide that protective canopy are going to remain in place?
Nothing. The mother nature guarantees that. Mother nature will decide if the trees live or die or fall or stand.
So there's, there's.
That's not our purview here. And, and you got, you have to realize, they're asking for a nine foot variance. If they cut nine feet off this deck and build it as of right, you're, you have the same, you're in the same situation as you are now.
So then I ask this question, why the extra nine feet?
Because it's a more usable and, and convenient deck size, which is not the first time we've had a request like that.
It's a more usable and convenient deck size, but it
If, if they were gonna build a nine, if they were gonna build a nine foot addition on a deck that was going to kill the trees that are blocking the view from you to them and them to you, I'd be the first one to deny it.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, uh, this board is gonna be considering a multi-part test as required by law and it's gonna be weighing the various uh, y- y- the various benefits and detriments of.
Exactly, I understand that one. And, and we all understand it. But sometimes the general public doesn't understand that. They have to realize that we, we have to look at this in a, in a multi-part uh, view. But we also have to show them that we do have concerns about what their lifestyle is gonna be about. And if, if our uh, variance approval is not for this case, but for any other case, is gonna severely affect their lifestyle, then we have to be careful and not do that. But if we feel that it is, it is, what's going to be built is not gonna be detrimental to their lifestyle, then we just, we don't have to take any consideration. But I wanna, I just wanna explain to the neighbors that are very concerned. And obviously, she's very concerned about this. And I, and I understand that. But, but through the years, we've seen this stuff go on and on and on. And some of the concerns that the neighbors come up with, it turned out to be nonissues once the project is completed and, and everybody sees how it really works. So I'm, I'm trying to ease their mind a little bit that this is not as bad as you think it's going to be if it gets approved. And I, and I'm not even saying it's going to be approved. You know, I'm only one vote here. There's, there's four other votes that could vote either way. And, and uh, so we don't even know what's gonna happen yet.
Mr. Johnina, I wish I could remember, but my memory isn't as good as that, the, the, the precise words that you used just two minutes ago to describe the, the inconvenience that's caused the Growletsers because in, in the absence of a larger deck. That, that the deck that is the current dimension served the prior family well for twenty years. And it's the same sized deck that we have. And it serves us perfectly well. There's nothing that, there's nothing that prevents them from expanding their deck as you can see across the back of their house. We, I guess I, I, you know, I'm asking why the variance then that brings everything that much closer to our home and makes it possible for that part of the deck that is closest to our home to see more activity than any other part of the deck. It will become the nerve center of, of their deck life. And there are other options available. I, I, I don't, I don't, I, I guess I don't know why a variance is, is necessary for them. They, they can still increase the size of their deck. They're, they're not bound to the current dimensions of the deck. Um, nor were we when we built, you know, leveled our, created our backyard and created a stone terrace, uh, level with the grass. I, it's, it's a matter of taste is what it comes down to, not a matter of, of urgency.
Can I, can I just?
Well, we understood.
Can I just say something in response? Cause I do, I hear what you're saying and I understand the concern. We're all, you know, most of us are, you know, are homeowners or, or residents of the town. And, right, and live in residential neighborhoods. I understand that. And uh, I, I have no idea how my, my colleagues are gonna look at this, uh, and I haven't fully read it in my mind yet. Um, but the thing I wanna ask you to consider is the framework in which you're looking at, putting aside your feelings about your home use. I understand that. I, I truly do, as much as an outsider can. The problem is that the factors in which you're evaluating it are not the ones that are being put on us. And when, when you, what's, what, and, and counsel, you're free to tell them what they are. They're balancing tests. And, and the problem I have in listening to some of this a little bit is that if they didn't get their variance and they did what you wanted as far as having a deck that was used within the existing space and they went and put it outside television and had all sorts of entertaining out there, all you would be left with is what the town code says about noise. And that does fact, that does factor in because that is really as of right, right now, what they have. They would be further away.
Yeah, it's, I, I mean, that's.
They would be further away.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just think, uh, it, look, they have a right to have a larger deck. Use the microphone.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry.
You know, like I said, we, we, we wanna be neighborly, but they have the, the perfect right of having a larger deck that is almost, gonna be almost triple the size of of the, of the original one. They have a perfect right to do that. We're not questioning that. We're questioning the why, um, the, the, the noise factor would be closest to our home. You're suggesting that there's nothing that you can do that, that, that our resort is to wait and see if problems arise. But we don't quite on, we, you know, with all due respect, uh, we did, we still, and, and there are things that we feel that we're not posted on the original plan that have, are a relief that they're not gonna be taking down any trees. And because of all the wetness and, and all the, the canopy and all the things that, that we were concerned about. But we still are, I'm, I'm, I can't get my arms around the fact that there is uh, why the TV has to be there. And if it can't be, if, if it can't be uh, designated from a zoning perspective um, to prevent the television from being there, why does it have to be zoned, you know, because of all of the available land that's available that, that they have?
You mean rezoned?
It, why it has to be rezoned? And, you know, we're not, they're gonna have a very, they're gonna have a big deck. Um, we don't have an issue with that at all.
Okay, I'd like to speak. I got one. So anyway, um, I, just be careful. Um, I joined this board, I don't know, eight, eight or ten years ago for one of the rea- I've lived in Chappaqua for over forty years. And one of the reasons I joined this board is because I am very sensitive to uh, what goes on in the town and how it's administered, and I want to be able to be part of that decision-making process. As our chairman pointed out, um, that we don't really have the purview over television. Um, but I would say this, uh, twenty-five years ago, I put in central air conditioning in my house. And we had to put two compressors, which would have been on the uh, north side of my property. Uh, but my neighbors sat out in the, in a screen-in porch there. So I spent an additional five thousand dollars to move those two air compressors, those compressors for the air conditioning to the other side of my house. So they weren't, so they didn't have to listen to that. And, and I'm, and I felt and they never asked me, they never said a word about it, but I knew that I wouldn't like it. And um, and I'm sensitive to noise and, and, you know, I will, I would probably say I'm hypersensitive to noise, so. But I would hope i- i- in, in the context of the neighborhood, that you could all come together and have a discussion. Um, I, I think there's ample ways to watch television inside the house um, with lots of rooms. I, I would think that that would be, to me, and, and I can speak for the board, that we normally are always trying to have neighbors get together and work out things on their own. Because we, you know, we're not the police and we don't want to be the police and we don't have the right to be the police. But that would be something that I would love to see happen. And it would be, you know, it could be a, a collegial get-together and discuss, you know, the real concerns that people have. Because there are things that the tallies could do that could upset you and you wouldn't want that to happen either. I, I've, I've often thought of noise in the neighborhood as sort of mutually ass- assured destruction. Anyone has the, anyone has the ability to blast out their neighbor and you, and we can do it whenever we want. But we hold that, we hold that um, that right, that thing inside, so we don't do it, cause we wouldn't like to hear it ourselves. So that would be my, you know, n- non-professional, just neighborly suggestion would be hopefully you could, to me, the size of the deck is immaterial. Uh, I'm glad to see you're not taking the trees out. Uh, that makes me happy. Um, and, but I think the rest of it is really just people to people. And, 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 and probably it's probably what we're missing in the country today, in fact, would be my suggestion to you.
I totally agree uh, with that. And I don't want you to think in my remarks that, I actually do think that it's best for when you hear this type of scenario. It really is best between neighbors that, I'd like to see it work out because there are constraints around us. And those constraints can lead to results that you're not, that neither side and that are gonna like. And um, that's unfortunate. And I don't want that with my neighbors and I don't want you to have that with your neighbors. So um, to be said, I can second that, I second heartily. And I, you know, if, if the applicant is so inclined to uh, as far an interner for a time, for the two um, jointy neighbors to talk about that. I think that's, I would think about that.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject here?
Absolutely.
The new plans represent a pergola on the deck that was never part of the original submission. If the applicant wishes to go forward with that, this may be the time to push this to the next meeting so that can be noticed.
That's the first I'm hearing of this one.
Yeah.
The new plans represent a pergola.
Okay.
The pergola was never part of the original submission.
Good. And Mr. Architect, what do you say about that?
I said on the one, I should brought it Tom's attention. Um, the, this is full transparency. I mean, I, there, there, the, when I, I read the letter, as soon as I received it, I immediately forwarded it to my client and the homeowner. Now, having said that, that's also why we generated all of the renderings as well as completed what is the full building permit set. Because as you know, we submit filing to be rejected to have the opportunity to stand here. And the, the thoughtfulness of the design was intended to be shown with all the drawings that are here. And certainly doing all the rendering, including showing how this chimney would not go to the ground, was done in response, you know, the um.
Where, do you have, you see the pergola?
Is the pergola in the variance area or just on the?
One post in the corner would be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you wanna take a look?
Well, I think, we can always have confidence of this because I think the suggestion is that these are not going to be resolved tonight, is that right?
So, I'm gonna say, this, this looks like an opportunity here. An opportunity for more neighborly discussion while we get the actual application adjusted to reflect the, the proposed pergola, uh, which may require no, no notices, Tom?
Yes, sir. Just for my clarification, wh- where is the pergola?
It's, I guess it's this.
Oh, this here?
Yeah.
Okay. And this is the fireplace that's about eleven feet tall.
Yeah, so it's a, a minor item that may present an opportunity here. So given the light of this new information, uh, we can't finalize this application if we wanted to. Because unless you're gonna forget about the pergola and get rid of it, which I don't think is gonna happen. So here we go again with another postponement. This is a, a, a new record for postponements. We don't usually do that. Yes, Tom?
With due respect, sir, the propane tank enclosure needs to meet NFPA fifty-eight regulations and they may not be able to enclose the tanks and may have to bury the tank.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, the previous owner had the tanks buried in two months, about two months. About two months before the Graylitzers bought the house, they dug up the tank for whatever reason and. Yeah, but they they did dig up the town. They, there wasn't, there were no, um, there there were no tanks above ground.
Once again, tank type and location.
So they can re-bury it, I suppose.
Yeah, it's it's really, again, not our purview, it's something that's going to the building department.
We welcome talking with the Graylitzers.
So why don't, why don't we, why don't we just come to an end right now? We're gonna, we're gonna postpone this application until the next one. The Graylitzers are going to amend their application to show the pergola. They're going to research the facts of whether or not we need uh, uh, approval on those tanks being enclosed rather than exposed. Uh, the fire code, et cetera, we trust on that regard. And in the intro, in the in the interest of neighborly uh, uh, cooperation, we hope the neighbors will get together and discuss their concerns together and come to some agreement as to what, if any, modifications they're willing to deal or the other side willing to accept.
Um, we we thank the Graylitzers for clarifying that the trees are coming down.
Good.
That a screen would be putting, would be put in. Here was some confusion because there was no screen on the original, on the original plan.
Okay, now we went all through that already, okay. So Mister uh, Mister Counsel.
Yes.
What what do we need now to create this, this adjournment till next meeting? We're all set, we did enough?
Yeah, yeah, well, uh, public, uh, public comment hasn't been closed, right?
No. No, we have not closed the public comment, and we will not until the next meeting.
Then I think we're, we're fine.
Okay, so we will adjourn this uh, application to our next meeting. My own information, information will be presented to us as proper format and with the holding expectation that the neighbors will be able to have a longer and in-depth conversation about their wants and needs and they will come to some terms. On that note, we'll see you all next time. Okay, we have had other right of our agenda and the approval will be one twenty-sixth, three twenty-five meeting minutes. I will vote to approve it as presented to us.
I second the motion.
Hi.
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 Lauren Gavri.
Hi.
Kathy Deth.
Hi.
Call for Chairman to get on, I mean, do you want?
Oh, no. It's about, I know.
If it's about this case, we won't even.
No, I know, I know, I know. I live on Hart Scrabble Road and our neighbors were given a variance to build out their house.